Hello, everyone, and good evening, and welcome to the Longdale City Council, as well as the Redevelopment Accessor Agency meeting. Thank everyone for joining us tonight. I'm gonna ask the Assistant City Clerk to give the roll call.
Mayor Protem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yeah, oh, here.
All members present, thank you.
Their phone caught me off guard when he was starting to do something. Okay, let's have our flex a little. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Reed to lead in the pledge of allegiance.
Be good, thank you. Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Okay, we have a couple of presentations to make tonight. Two of our councilmembers will be leaving us, and we wanna show our appreciation tonight with a couple of presentations. If you will, let me make sure I have mine. And I'm here. So, good evening, councilmembers, and Councilmember Reed, and all of the senior guests here tonight, and those who join us on the phone. It's my pleasure to welcome you this evening, and we want to thank you for taking out the time to recognize our public service of two of our outgoing councilmembers. And I want you to please join us in recognizing Councilmember James Osborne and Daniel Reed for their longstanding service to the city of Longdale and our community that they hold dear to their hearts. And we're gonna begin with a couple of presentations. But before we continue, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge some of our guests that have joined us tonight to make presentations. We have joining us tonight Superintendent Gregory O'Brien from the Sentinel Valley Union High School District. He will be joining us. We also have the Board of Trustees President Bonnie Carnaldo, as well as Superintendent Betty Hamilton. She will be joining us as well, and they both are from the Longdale Elementary School District. And also joining us from the office of Assemblywoman Autumn Burke, Samani Cunningham. We're gonna thank you for joining us tonight. And we appreciate the time that you've taken out of your busy schedule to be with us tonight, as we acknowledge our two outgoing members of the Longdale City Council. We'll make presentations first to Councilmember Osborne, followed by, directly followed by, Councilmember Reed. And the presentations will take the following order. First, there will be a presentation by the city of Longdale, followed by the Longdale Elementary School District, and then the Sentinel Valley Union High School District, and followed by the California State Assemblywoman Autumn Burke's office. I will begin the presentation to Councilmember Osborne on behalf of the city council and the staff. If you can walk up to the, join me, Mr. Osborne. That was just a joke, seeing that you're at home.
I'm there in spirit, Robert.
You're there, there, there in spirit. Pretend like you're standing right next to me, but you're not so tall. Right, I'm taller, however you want to do it, right. Okay. City Councilmember Jane Osborne has served the city of Longdale for the past 12 years, from April 2008 to December 2020. A longtime resident and an avid historian, Councilmember Osborne has served on the city council for the past 12 years. He also authored two books, not one, but two books on the Longdale history, and he is the founder of the city's historical society. With an extensive Longdale historical collection, the city has enjoyed the privilege of displaying some of his collections throughout the years. Councilmember Osborne represents the city on a variety of city subcommittees, as well as a number of outside agencies, which includes the Longdale, excuse me, the Los Angeles County Vector Control District, where he served on the Board of Directors. He was also the past president. He also served on the South Bay Council of Governments, where he not only was a member of the Board of Directors, but also served as a past chairman of the board. In addition, he also served on the Homeless Task Force Board and the Steering Committee of the South Bay Council of Government. Additionally, he's also represented the city on the Southern California Association of Governments, where he served on the Energy and Environmental Committee member. So, on behalf of, we do have this nice little plaque. You probably have it in your hand, raise it up for everyone to see it, Jim.
Beautiful, Jim.
There you go.
Beautiful.
Very good. So, on behalf of the Longdale City Council. There you go. And staff, I'm pleased to present you with this plaque in recognition of your, your deep appreciation of 12 years of service and dedication to the city of Longdale. We want to thank you for your service, and we wish you well and the best in your retirement and your future endeavors. And I'm gonna ask before I invite you to say a few words, but see if Councilmember Protem Suarez, if she wanted to add anything. I'm sorry, though, to Protem.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So, I mean, I think, too, this goes beyond, I, I, the thing that I always enjoyed working with Jim is he was always there to provide oversight and, and kind of took me under his wing when I first joined the council. So, for me, this is especially sentimental time, because I will be sad to see him go, and I hope that kind of grown, I know I've grown a lot in this role, and I'd like to thank him. For those of you who don't know Jim, also, he's, he shreds on the guitar, and he has long, deep roots in the city, so I will miss seeing him go. And I think his service went beyond just being a councilmember. He really dedicated a lot, he contributed a lot to the city. So, we will be sad to see him go, but we're also happy for him. I know he's looking forward to retirement, so best wishes to him, and I hope he continues to contribute in some way to our, our city, which I know that he loves deeply.
Excellent, rock on. Councilmember Kearney, Pat Kearney, do you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, Jim, I have a cold one for me, and I'll never forget DC trip. Have a good retirement, Jim.
Thank you. That must have been a pretty good trip.
Yeah, it was.
Councilmember Reed, you have everything, you were like the hair. Councilmember Reed?
Not much.
Might be asleep.
I suppose it helps if you turn the double mutes off. Jim, congratulations on retiring, enjoy. It's been a pleasure working with you. I know you got a lot of things on your mind to take care of, and it'll keep you busy.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Yeah, and I wanna say congratulations as well to, to Councilmember Osborne, one of the youngest retirees that I know of. We could all be so lucky, you know what I mean? But yes, I just, you know, wanna thank you for all your, your hard work and your commitment, your service to the community. And like Mayor Protem Suarez said, you go beyond your service just here in the city of Longdale. But you, you know, you've been involved, the various boards that you've been a, a, a member of. These boards take a lot of time, you know, and consume, you know, a lot of your, your time, particularly the, when you talk about being a member of the Southern California Association of Governments, and being on the Energy and Environment Committee. We know how much time that, that takes, and that takes dedication. And I wanna appreciate you for, for the time that you spend on that board representing our city, 'cause those boards are, as you know, Jim, are boards that most people are not aware of, unless you actually work in government, but they are very important in terms of, it's a metropolitan planning organization. It's very important to have representation on those boards, and they are time consuming. I just wanna thank you for the time that you spend, not just as a councilmember in the city proper, but what you do in the outside agencies and represent the city, because those are the type of things that, that makes our city make sure that we are represented well. I wanted to thank you for that, Jim. Also, I wanna say that we, we're gonna look forward to you coming back. I mean, we didn't have the Jazz Festival this year, but we, I'm gonna assume that that's not gonna be the last that we hear from you, you know, rocking out, you know, on the guitar, right? Is that now here, amen?
We'll see.
Oh, that's a we'll see, okay. We'll see, we'll see. But we, we thoroughly enjoyed you as a councilmember, just as a, as a fan. So, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Robert.
And with that, if you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I might as well speak now, as opposed to the council comments, since it's more fresh in my mind. And, but it is much appreciated. I'm very proud of my colleagues. It's been a great council, and even past members. And we've done some great things in this city. And as it comes to a close, it's, it's that time when you reflect back on, on what has transpired, what has happened, what we've done for the community, for the residents. I mean, all of us played a part in some way in a brand-new library. When I first joined the council, that was near and dear to my heart, since it was my grandmother who actually founded it. And short after, we saw the development of three new parks in our city. I mean, that was kind of unheard of for most South Bay communities to have not one, but three new parks for the residents to enjoy. And of course, the New Community Center, which, boy, that was, that was a lot of work. And of course, now known as Harold Hoffman Community Center, so fond memories of, of the mayor, of the late mayor. And other facts, of course, is we've always contained a balanced budget within the city, healthy reserve, that was the envy of many other cities in the state. That's something to be proud of, so I think there's no, no regrets. We got a lot done, a lot of good stuff. I also wanted to just recall and thank, when I, when I first ran, the individual who was probably most responsible, who sort of talked me into it, was the late Councilman Larry Rudolph. Great guy, still missed, and so either I can be angry or thank him for, for all the experiences. Some were great, some were not so great, but regardless, Larry was the guy. Also comes to mind is the late Charmaine Doty. She was a big encourager, you know, she was a friend of my mom's as well. And she helped a lot, as did the late Pastor Chris Beamer, and another girl, Elizabeth Bigness, who helped me when I first ran. And I know I'm gonna forget names, but some come to mind. Bob and Janice Givens, Lenore Bemis, Burnett's mom, Sandy was a big help. Bonnie Carnaldo, who I guess is with us tonight. She was a supporter, as was Shirley Rudolph. Prayers go to Shirley, as we know, she had an injury. Even Marco Sandoval, which I don't know whatever, how Marco's doing. He's kinda out of the loop. But I know I'm missing somebody, and if I do, I apologize. Tell me later, I forgot to say my name. But in any case, thanks to everyone, and of course, all city staff. City staff, as I said in some comments a few weeks back, a total source of pride for, for me, and I think to, to all of us. Without them, we'd be nothing. I mean, they really do everything that we get a lot of credit for. And really made some good friends over the years in, in those members. Some, of course, retired, some sadly have passed on. And that's the one thing that comes to mind, all those who are no longer with us. And, and of course, we're going through one of the greatest challenges ever. So, I, I say first, congratulations to Rhonda and Shirley, and I sure hope it gets better for you as the months go on under these crazy times. My, my only bit of advice for the, the new members of the council would be, just don't be afraid of critics. Always use your conscience, your conscience is the way to vote, and always think what's best for the community and the residents overall. That's always what I tried to do when I made votes and decisions, and strove to do what's best for the whole community, not necessarily just one individual. And lastly, I'll, I'll still be around for a while, and so I'll try to, try to keep in touch with all of you, and wish you well in the, in the coming months. That's it, thank you.
Okay, Jim, don't, don't go anywhere. We do have a, a few more presentations. We have a presentation by the Longdale Elementary School District of NAC, which is gonna be Board President Bonnie Carnaldo and Superintendent Betty Hamilton. They're gonna make a presentation. I think Bonnie Carnaldo's gonna lead the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Jim, I'm gonna read this verbatim. I know if you had a copy, I wouldn't have to do that necessarily, but it has some important things to say about you, and then I'm gonna add a couple of personal notes, because we've known each other quite a while. So, whereas Councilman Osborne served in the Longdale City Council from April 2008 to December 2020, he represented the city of Longdale on numerous city subcommittees, as well as representing the city with outside organizations. And whereas an avid historian, Councilman Osborne authored two books on the city of Longdale's history and founded the city's historical society. And during his time on the city council, the city saw the establishment of the county library, three new parks, and the Harold E. Hoffman Community Center. And whereas Councilman Osborne decided not to run for reelection this year, and his final day is today, Monday, December 7th, 2020. And therefore, the Board of Trustees and the Superintendent of the Longdale Elementary School District extend their deep gratitude to Councilman Jim Osborne for his dedicated service to the Longdale community, and we wish him the very best in his future endeavors. The foregoing resolution was approved by the Longdale Elementary School District of Trustees at the meeting held on November 19th, 2020. Jim, I want you to know that the entire board is here. A Dean Morales, Kathy Burris, Ann Phillips, myself, and our Superintendent Dr. Hamilton. And Shirley would have been here, but you already know that she can't be. So, I, but I wanna tell you, Jim, I appreciate you remembering that, do you remember that the night, you, I think you had just filed your papers, and we, I, I ran into you with Bob, your friend Bob, over at Islands, and, no, Olive Garden. And you told me that you were running for city council. And I pulled out, I think, a $20 bill, and you said, "What's this for?" And I said, "I wanna go down in history as saying that I gave you your first campaign contribution." So, my $20 was well, was well given, and you've been there to answer questions for me, Jim. You've challenged me at times as a school board member, and I think I've grown as a school board member because of your questions and your polite challenges. But I also wanna say, Jim, oh, you're welcome. No one mentioned your work at El Camino. I've called you about trees and bushes in the parkways. I've talked to you about them for yards. And so, no one mentioned that time of your, of your life here, 'cause when you were on a council, you were working as a professor over at El Camino. So, you've been, and you've done a lot, and I, again, on a very, very personal note, I cannot ever tell you how much I appreciate you nominating me for the El Camino Women Hall of Fame. I, I appreciate that very much. You're gonna be greatly missed, Jim, not being on the council, but I'm glad you're gonna keep in touch with us.
Well, thank you, Bonnie. Yeah, you know, I, I do remember that, that, that time you gave me the donation. I, that is the one and only time I ever took a donation. I just, I, you wouldn't take it back. I kept trying to have it back.
No, no, I wanted to be the, I wanted to be the one. And I also wanna tell you, Jim, if you look on Facebook, you'll, you'll see some news about Marco. It's not very, it's not very good.
Oh, sorry to hear that, I don't know. Well, thank you.
Ask Rhonda, she knows.
Well, thank you again.
You're most welcome.
Thank you for your presentation, Madam President. All right, next presentation, Sentinel Valley Union High School District, Dr. Gregory O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the community. Councilmember Osborne, on behalf of the Board of Education in Sentinel Valley, we just wanna thank you for your many, many years of service and for your partnership with us as a school district. The entire board at the November 17th meeting, 2020, made the final, the following recognition. It said, "James Osborne, Councilmember, city of Longdale, in appreciation of your distinguished public service to the community of Longdale by providing a safe community and culture." And so, we're very grateful for all the years of service. We're thankful for what you've done, and we wish you all the best in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate those kind words.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent Dr. Gregory O'Brien, for the presentation. Our next presenter is Samani Cunningham, representing the office of Assemblywoman Autumn Burke.
Hi, thank you all for having me. We have a resolution for the councilmember, so I am just going to read that. It's a little like the ones we've already heard, but I will go ahead. Whereas the Honorable James H. Osborne is completing his term on the Longdale City Council, following 12 years of dedicated and responsible service, and it is appropriate at this time to highlight his many achievements and extend to him special recognition and commendations for his many fine public accomplishments. And whereas throughout his years in the city council, from April 2008 to December 2020, James Osborne has worked diligently to address the concerns and needs of the residents of the area and improve the quality of life for future generations, including helping in the establishment of the beautiful new Longdale Library, three new parks, and the Harold E. Hoffman Community Center. And whereas James Osborne has held membership on a wide variety of official city committees and subcommittees, and worked diligently, diligently to provide numerous projects, to bring numerous projects to fruition through his leadership as a member and past president of the Los Angeles County West Vector Control and Vector Born Disease Control District Board of Trustees, a member of the Board of Directors and past chair of the South Bay City's Councils of Governments, as well as a member of the Homeless Task Force and Steering Committee, and a member of the Energy and Environment Committee of the Southern California Association of Governments. And whereas, a leader in every sense, sense of the word, a forward thinker who envisions life as it should be in the future, and a tireless worker for better understanding among people, James Osborne has won the praise and admiration of the local community. As an, and as an avid historian, he authored two books on the city of Longdale's history and founded the Longdale Historical Society. Whereas, as a result of his tremendous hard work and unwavering commitment to the community, James Osborne has compiled an impressive record of personal and civic achievements, a record that has earned them, earned him the admiration and respect of those persons who would have the privilege of associating with him. Now, therefore be it, resolved by Assemblymember Autumn R. Burke, that she takes personal pleasure in commending the Honorable James H. Osborne upon the occasion of his retirement as a member of the Longdale City Council, applauds him for his admirable record of responsible citizenship and dedicated service, and for enhancing the lives of the people of Longdale, and conveys her warm best wishes for further achievement and personal satisfaction in all of his future endeavors, dated this seventh day of December 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, and please thank the assembly member for the kind remarks and the recognition. Much appreciated.
I, I absolutely will.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham, for that presentation from the office of Assemblywoman Autumn Burke. Okay, let's proceed. That's our presentation, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, let's continue, as we recognize and honor City Councilmember Daniel Reed for his longstanding service on the city council. The presentations will follow the same order as the, the previous presenters. I will begin with the presentation of the city of Longdale to the Councilmember Reed on behalf of the city of Longdale, as well as the staff. Councilmember Daniel Reed has served on the Longdale City Council for the past six years, beginning in June 2014, when a vacancy occurred. And then in 2016, he was elected to a four-year term. Immediately before his city council appointment, he served on the Longdale Planning Commission for two terms, from June 2010 to May 2014. Dan represents the city on the Board of Directors of the California Contract Cities Association. He has represented the city on various subcommittees, including the Billboard Subcommittee, the Budget Subcommittee, the Municipal Solid Waste Disposal and Recycle Subcommittee, and the City and School District Subcommittee. City Councilmember Reed is also president of the South Bay 25 Club and has participated in the annual Santa Slay, which is the kickoff to the city's annual Angel Tree Lighting Ceremony, one of the city's most treasured events. On behalf of the Longdale City Council and city staff, I'm pleased to present you with this plaque in recognition and deep appreciation of six years of service and dedication from the Longdale City Council. Thank you for your service, and we wish you well and your, and the best of your future endeavors. And you can show the plaque to everyone, Mayor. And I want to ask Councilmember Mayor Protem Suarez, if she has any comment.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just wanted to say to Dan, I'm gonna say it without your title, just 'cause I feel like we've, we've grown to have that kind of relationship where we can be friends outside of council. I think that goes for all of the councilmembers currently serving. But I think we started off together, actually, on our first race. And it's, you know, I've always admired Dan, his calm demeanor, also his, he's a very active volunteer outside of just being a councilmember. And also, I wanna thank him, too, as a veteran as well. There's a lot of things that Dan has done for this city that we, that we are definitely indebted to him for. And I know that he'll still be involved in some capacity, and I hope to see you in the future, Dan. I know we'll still keep in contact, and I hope you reach out, and we, we continue to work together, 'cause I know, at the end of the day, it's always been for the city of Longdale. So, I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Pat Kearney?
Okay, hey, Dan. Hi, Danny. Okay, I know we're gonna miss you on the council, but I know we're only two blocks away. And I know, I, I'm not gonna hold this against you that you were in the Navy, but you know, somebody had to be in the Navy. And I will talk to you soon, around the street, buddy. Take care and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's hear from Councilmember James Osborne.
Hey, Robert.
Yeah.
Well, my colleague basically said a lot of what I was gonna say, so I'll keep it even shorter, but you know, Dan, we'll still keep in touch. We'll still see you. And I, I know for, for a fact, for anyone who doubts it, every decision you made, you did what you thought and believed was the best thing for the residents of this city. And I certainly always believed that, that you were very thoughtful in your deliberations, and I think you made the best decisions every time I was in a deliberation with you, be it an open session, closed session. Been very proud of your service to the city, and I wish you all the best of luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And then I wanna thank you, yeah, and then I wanna thank you, too, as well, for your, your service to our, our community, for what you do on city council, as well as your, all the organizations that you volunteer with as, as well. And all the hard work that you put in, Councilmember Osborne is, is correct. We appreciate your, your, your calm, cool, collective, and thoughtful demeanor on the, the city council as we deliberate on certain issues or what, what have you, and you able to think things through before making a decision. And that's a, a real positive, a trait to have, and appreciated trait to have as a, a colleague and a member of the board. So, we really kinda miss that and really appreciate that. And I just wanna say that we know we'll see you in, in the community, to continue to be active in the community, and just call down on us any, anytime, and we, we love to continue to, to have the, the work in a partnership in whatever capacity you may be in. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Hold on, thank, I'm running into some problems here. Okay. So, let's do this, let's have the, this time we'll just do the, the other presentation, presentators first, and then we'll swing back to Daniel Reed to do the council, to do all your comments at once. So, let's go ahead and have a presentation from the Longdale Elementary School District, I believe, Bonnie Carnaldo. I believe Bonnie Garnado will also make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Dan, um, a lot of what's been said, I'm going to reiterate. But you know, in teaching, if you don't say it at least 10 times, uh, kids don't remember. So this will be the third time, I think, so you'll remember it maybe until we say it seven more times. So whereas Councilman Reed was first appointed to serve on the Lawndale City Council in June 2014 and was elected to a four-year term in 2016, and also served as Mayor Protem during his time on the city council. And whereas he represented the city on the Board of Directors of the California Contract Cities Association, has represented the city on the Billboard Subcommittee, the Budget Subcommittee, the Municipal Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling Services, RFP Subcommittee, and the City School District Subcommittee. And whereas Councilman Reed is president of the South Bay 25 Club and has participated in the annual Santa Slay, which follows the city's annual Angel Tree Lighting Ceremony, which we all know is a beloved event here in the city. Whereas Councilman Reed's final day of the Lawndale City Council will be today, Monday, December 7th, 2020. And therefore, the Board of Trustees and the Superintendent of the Lawndale Elementary School District extend their gratitude to Councilman Dan Reed for his dedicated service to the Lawndale community and wish him the very best in his future endeavors. The foregoing resolution was approved by the Lawndale Elementary School District Board of Trustees at the meeting held on November 19th, 2020. Dan, on behalf of the entire board, and I again Kathy's here and Adeem and Ann, and you know Shirley would be here if she could, we truly, truly um want to wish you well in what you decide to do in the future. But I have to tell you, Dan, just like I did with Jim, there's some things about you I have to say personally. I remember watching you as you walked door to door. I happened to be out and about that day. And as I was driving around the city, I would see you hustling from door to door, passing out flyers, talking to people. I had never seen anyone move as fast as you did. And I thought, okay, this guy's a go-getter. And I also want to say, Dan, that while I know that you represented the city and all of the community and all of the citizens in the community very well, you always took the time for me and other people to listen to them. You weren't always able to solve their problem, but I know this. You were always willing to listen and always direct them to somebody who could help solve their problem or could help them understand what needed to be done or could not be done. Truly um a good guy, good listener, and so much more I could say about you, Dan. But um, I know time is of the essence. But know that I believe in you, I support you, and I'm proud to say I call you friend. So um, thank you so much, Mayor, for allowing the school district and myself as board president to pass um on these resolutions to the council. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words, Bonnie.
Love you, Dan.
Thank you once again, Madam President, Bonnie Garnado. The next presenter is Sentinel Valley Junior High School District, Dr. Gregory O'Brien.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council and members of the community. Um, Councilmember Reed, I am very grateful to have known you. For me, these past six years as well, in my time in Sentinel Valley, um, the times that we've met and worked on the Education Committee and other things and met with city leaders and even members from Lawndale Elementary School District. It's always been a pleasure. I've really appreciated your your smile, your welcoming spirit at all times, and your, of course, hearty greeting every single time I meet you. So thank you so much. It's really, I know, made my time here um in the region much more successful, and I really appreciate that. So on behalf of um the Board of Education in Sentinel Valley and Dr. Daniel Yarudi, our Board President, we'd like to say um we created this recognition certificate for you um for Dan Reed, Councilmember, City of Lawndale, in appreciation of your distinguished public service to the community of Lawndale by providing a safe community and culture. So thank you very much. We want to wish you all the best, and of course, we look forward to working with you in the future, and we'll see what happens. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Dr. O'Brien. Okay. The next presentation is by Samondi Cunningham, representing Assemblywoman Autumn Burke.
Okay, um, I am going to read the next resolution for Councilmember Reed. Uh, whereas the Honorable Dan Reed is ending his term on the Lawndale City Council after six years of dedicated and responsible service, and it is appropriate at this time to highlight his many achieved achievements and extend and special recognition and commendation for his leadership. And whereas throughout his years on the city council from June 2014 to December 2020, as well as serving on the Lawndale Planning Committee from June 2010 to May 2014, Dan Reed has worked diligently to address the concerns of residents and to improve the quality of life for future generations. And whereas Dan Reed has held membership on a variety of official city committees and subcommittees and worked diligently to bring numerous projects to life through his leadership as a member of the Board of Directors of the California Contract Cities Association, president of the South Bay 25 Club, member of the Billboard Subcommittee, Budget Subcommittee, the Municipal Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling Services, RFP Subcommittee, and the City School District Subcommittee. And whereas a true leader and civil servant to the city of Lawndale, Dan Reed has set a standard for leadership to be admired. And whereas, as a result of his exceptional hard work and unwavering commitment to the community, Dan Reed has compiled a noble record of personal and civic achievements, a record that has earned him praise and respect of his peers. Now therefore be it, resolved by Assemblymember Autumn R. Burke, that she takes personal pleasure in commending the Honorable Dan Reed upon the occasion of the completion of his term as a member of the Lawndale City Council, applauds him for his admirable record of responsible citizenship and dedicated service and for enhancing the lives of the people of Lawndale, and conveys her warm best wishes for further achievement and personal satisfaction in his future endeavors. Dated this seventh day of December 2020. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And please thank Assemblywoman Autumn Burke for me.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. And thank Assemblywoman Autumn Burke. All right. I want to thank all those who are able to join us tonight as we honor our two outgoing Councilmembers, um Osborne and Councilmember Reed. We would truly miss their service here on city council, but we know they will remain as active members of our community. And of course, we will see both you guys around town. And we appreciate all this service. I do have one thing I wanted to back up and make sure I did have the opportunity to give that and uh the rest of the council to provide comments. I did that, right?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure it might be done.
Yes, that would be my turn now, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, it will. It would be your turn to provide some comments, Councilmember.
So I really do want to thank everyone. It has been a wonderful journey and a pleasure to work with everyone. And uh, as I said, I will be around, I will be in touch, uh, and I will be back. So it's been uh very much of a pleasure on my end and personal growth, serving the city and taking care of the various areas that we work through. So it's been a long, wonderful journey on that case. And Jim, I think we traveled in a whole lot of the same circles because you had a lot of the same names that support me, and I thank everyone. Uh, and I just wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas as we're going forward. And uh, I will keep in touch and we will keep rolling. And I do uh charge both Rhonda and Shirley. Just remember, you can't make everyone happy 100% of the time, but you can be active 100% of the time. So keep it going. These ladies will do fine. I know there's a lot of challenges going forward, so enjoy. And I do say, as the catalyst for our uh Veteran Memorial flags, please keep that going, ladies and gentlemen. Have a wonderful time.
Right, thank you. All right. All right, thank you, everyone. Let's move ahead our agenda to item D, which is our Public Safety Report. Let's hear from my captain. He's available?
It'll be Lieutenant Leo, I'm standing in front.
Okay, Lieutenant Leo, how are you?
Good, yourself?
All right. Thanks for joining us.
All right, first off, uh, I want to thank you uh to uh Councilman Osborne and Councilman Reed for your support of the Sheriff's Department over the years. It is appreciated. I wish you well in your retirement and in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, your here members of the city council. I am here tonight to present the Public Safety Report for November 16th through December 6th. Currently, the resident motorcycle deputy has been healing from an injury, but in his place, it continues to be effective traffic enforcement during the week in the city of Lawndale. One of the deputies who was filling in for the motorcycle deputy was conducting traffic enforcement on Hawthorne Boulevard on November 19th at 7:30 a.m. when he observed a vehicle driving the wrong way on Hawthorne Boulevard. Conducted a traffic stop at the Budget Inn regarding the violation. The deputy saw the driver reach under his seat. Deputy detained the driver and recovered a BB gun from underneath the seat. Driver had a suspended life, possessed methamphetamine, and admitted to possessing stolen property. Further investigation revealed the suspect and two additional suspects possessed a significant amount of stolen property, which appeared to have been from thefts in the South Bay area. The detectives are diligently working to identify all the victims in that case. Suspects were arrested for receiving stolen property and booked at South Los Angeles Station. Recently, the temperature has gotten frigid in the early morning hours. In an effort to prevent any unnecessary thefts of vehicles during this cold season, we are reminding citizens to avoid starting up their vehicles and leaving the keys in the ignition while their vehicle is unattended. We understand that having a nice, warm vehicle makes for an enjoyable drive in the morning. However, if your vehicle is stolen, it will make for a miserable Christmas. During this Christmas season, please avoid having any of your purchases or valuables visible in your vehicle. It is best to put them in your trunk if possible. Even better would be to put them entirely inside your residence. Please do not give these real-life wrenches a chance during your holiday. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Captain Leo, for that report. Are there any um questions of the um Lieutenant Leo's report?
This is Jim, and uh no comment other than just a thank you for the sentiment. Uh, good to hear you back, Lieutenant. We haven't heard you for a while, so glad you're back on duty.
Thank you very much.
Um, Assistant Councilman Pat?
Yes.
I just want to tell Lieutenant Leo and his crew about thanks for getting eight weapons off the street in November, one live ammo and one Dirk. Great job by your deputies. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, um Lieutenant Leo, for the report. And yes, it is good um to hear your voice again and glad that you um that that you're back. And thank you for serving our community, and thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next item on our agenda is oral communications. I'm going to ask the Assistant City Clerk, have we received any oral communications?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have one, and I'll go ahead and read it verbatim.
Thank you.
Uh, Dave, Lawndale resident. If we are supposed to be on lockdown, are you going to cancel street sweeping ticketing? It seems like it should be canceled since everyone is at home again. And that ends public comment.
Okay. Definitely comment, okay, great. So we'll close public comments. Are there any um council comments regarding oral communication? Okay, none. Thank you for those oral comments. And let's move to item G under the Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar, there's items three through nine on the consent calendar, which include um items from the redevelopment successor agency. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, this is Dan. If anyone doesn't have any questions, then I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, Madam, this is Councilman Kearney, I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Reed that we approve the consent calendar and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the Assistant Clerk to conduct the vote.
For the consent calendar, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, Administration, item 10, certification of election results. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I am pleased to bring forward forward an item certifying the election results for the 2020 Lawndale General Municipal Election. The election took place on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, for the purpose of electing a mayor and two members of city council. The vote by mail period started on October 5th, 2020. Every registered voter in LA County received a vote by mail ballot. A ballot drop box was placed at the entrance of Hogan Park uh in the city of Lawndale. Two vote centers were also placed in the city of Lawndale uh and were available for early voting. Eleven days prior to Election Day at the Alonzo Park Vote Center and five days prior to Election Day at Jane Adams Middle School Vote Center. As of Election Day, the city of Lawndale had 16,048 registered voters. 11,955 ballots were cast, giving the city a 75% voter turnout. This election had the highest total number of Lawndale voters uh who cast the ballot in its history, and this election has been the highest turnout percentage for a Lawndale election since the 1960s. Also noteworthy is the highest uh highest vote by mail ballots cast ever with 9,053. Staff is recommending city council adopt Resolution 2012-066 and declare and determine that Robert Pullen Miles was elected as mayor for a full term of two years, and Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman and Shirley Cuevas were elected as members of city council for a full term of four years. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any um any questions on the report?
There are no other questions. I'll make a motion to approve.
And this is Councilman Kearney. Okay, so the motion's been made by Osborne that we approve the um certification of the election and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct the vote.
For item 10, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Item 11 is installation of elected officials. Uh, newly elected members of the Lawndale City Council would take their oath of allegiance and be seated at this time. I'm going to ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct um the installation of the elected officials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll go ahead and uh start the oath of allegiance. I'll take you first. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
My right hand is raised.
Aye, Robert Pullen Miles?
Aye, Robert Pullen Miles.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties? And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duty?
Upon which I'm about to enter?
Upon which I am about to enter.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll now be administering the oath to newly elected Councilmember Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman. Rhonda, raise your right hand.
Can you hear me?
Gotcha.
Great. My hand is raised and my other hand is on the Bible.
Sounds good. Uh, I, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman?
I, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties?
Upon which I'm about to enter?
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Matthew.
Congratulations.
Here, here.
I'm glad.
You ready, man? Did we lose back? No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cordova, you're good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, 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 Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our staff, honored and distinguished guests, sisters, brothers and friends. Uh, first thing first, I want to thank Matthew. Uh, he has really been a great public servant in working with me. So I could do all this right here. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you and I go back many years together. I remember you were, you were on the staff with the late great Senator Jenny Ortepeza. When, when we elected her to Long Beach School Board, she was the first Latina. I gave her the oath of office. And then, and then she was the state, she was the city councilwoman, then the state assembly, the state senator. She passed at a very tender age. And then later on, you were on the staff of Board Member Jerome Horton. Uh, Jerome Horton, when he ran his first campaign for the Inglewood City Council, he ran his campaign out of my family room. I also gave him the oath of office as well, too. Now, just, just a, 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 a brief comment here. I want to talk about public service. Public service is a noble cause. Majority of elected officials, teachers, police officers, and other men and women in the public arena are dedicated servants that we are lucky to have. President Bush often reminded us that, that much is given and much is required. Unfortunately, today it is fashionable to castigate, mock and dishonor those Americans who have served in the public sector as elected officials or as bureaucrats. It is easy to pile up with stories of foolishness or incompetence. But it's hard to imagine why good and able people would offer themselves up to work, policing our streets, educating our children, or standing for office, when those individuals are referred to as losers or laggards and whose judgments, intellect or integrity are called into question time and time again. The front philosopher and revolutionary Joseph Beatty, the maestra, said that every country has a government it deserves. And in a democracy, we have the leaders we deserve. As someone who has spent much of my career in public service, I can tell you that many of the smartest, hardest working, the most thoughtful and able people I know are those I have the privilege of working with in the public sector. They often serve a considerable sacrifice to themselves and their families. And we are lucky, they suit up every day to see about the problems and work for the American people. During my days in Washington and Sacramento, most of the people I came across in every branch of government, they were there for the right reasons. Did I agree with every one of them or with everything they did? Of course not. But I tried to hold the belief that no matter their point or view, their motives were pure and their intentions good. Finally, and regrettably, uh, well, first of all, uh, uh, a councilwoman elect, a Shirley Cuevas, as you, as a councilwoman elect in the great city of Longdale, that you prepare to enter the public arena. I hope for two things. First, that elected officials, your colleagues, the faculty and staff of your great city will know how much we admire and respect their contributions. And second, that our fellow citizens will show you their support for those who work on your behalf after all, for whom much is given, much is required. I thank you for that. Uh, councilwoman elect Cuevas, are you ready? Can you speak? Can you hear me? Surely, I can't hear you.
I'm mute. Hit the mute button.
Councilwoman elect Cuevas, can you unmute yourself?
How about now?
Yeah, yeah, man, I worked it out.
Okay, got you now. Okay, uh, uh, can you raise your right hand? Okay, thank you. Okay, I state your name?
I, Shirley Cuevas.
Follow me swear or affirm?
She's someone we support.
And affirm? That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
That I will bear truth, faith and allegiance?
That I will bear truth, faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
And that I will and faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will and faithfully discharge the duties?
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations and Godspeed to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Thank, and thank you, Mr. Mr. Cordova. And with that, I'll go ahead and conduct a roll call for the new Longdale City Council. Um, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Here.
All members present?
Thank you. Um, at this time, um, before we go to item twelve, although we do have items from the city council members in general, I'm gonna, let's, let's stick with, um, before we go to item twelve, let's see if, um, Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman would like to say a few words, followed by Councilwoman Shirley Cuevas. If you like.
Thank you, Mayor Robert Pullen Miles. I appreciate the opportunity to say something. First of all, to the two outgoing council members, both of you I look up to completely. And what you have offered to the city. I am so indebted for you bringing the city up into this point. And whatever life has in front of you, may it always be full of happiness and success. Um, to the current council, I, I look forward to working with you and learning next to you. Um, there are so many things I'm, I am excited to learn. And I will probably be the question asker of the group. But please just be patient. My heart means well. And, um, I look forward to getting busy and always keeping focused on the fact we serve a fantastic community and that it's about them. We have to learn to, um, I think, I'm feeling my dad at the moment and knowing that in this position, one needs to think outside of one's own best interest and in the community. And I think that Jim and I had that conversation just yesterday. And that is, my goal is to always think about the community first in this role. So thank you. And I, um, appreciated the opportunity to, to say congratulations to Shirley and job well done to Dan and to Jim. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cuevas?
Um, I would like to thank, uh, all the Longdale citizens for their support, um, with this election. Um, Dan and Jim, thank you very much for your service. Um, I have some, uh, tough shoes to fill. You guys are great and hopefully I could count on you guys on any advice. Um, Ray, thank you for your mentorship. Um, you've been a great help during this campaign. Um, and I'm really looking forward to serving the community and working with, uh, you, Mayor, um, and my fellow council members. Um, and, uh, thank you, Rhonda. And, uh, we'll be talking soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cuevas. Yeah, I, I too, I want to just thank the, um, the community for their, their support in electing me, um, to serve as, as their mayor for another term. I just appreciate all the, the trust, um, that they have bestowed, um, upon me, um, and the, the honor to serve, you know, as their public servant and as their mayor. And I look forward to working with this, uh, new council, um, both Rhonda and Shirley, um, and as well as, um, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez and of course, um, Councilmember Pat Kearney. Um, we have a lot to do, um, to continue the progress that we have, uh, made over the, over the past, um, few years. We have a lot of, um, projects in the pipeline. And I look forward to the new council members, um, jumping right in with their, their, their input. I know we're gonna, um, get to where we are going. And, um, we're gonna be represented, um, well by the two, um, new council members. And I just look forward to working with all the, the council members. And I just want to say once again to all the residents and the voters and the stakeholders for, um, putting their trust, um, in me as, um, serving and leading this, this council, um, as their mayor. And thank you once again. And that's what I will conclude with. And with that, I will now advance the agenda to item twelve, the, um, annual reorganization of the city council. Um, this is where we reorganize the city council for, e- every year, a member of the, the council, um, served as the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem Suarez did a wonderful job as Mayor Pro Tem. Um, and at this point, we will entertain, um, reorganizing for another member of the council to serve in that role, beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-one and ending December thirty-first, um, two thousand twenty-one. Um, so if anyone would like to nominate someone to serve as Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate.
Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate an individual to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for January first, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to nominate Councilmember Kearney. I know he's, he's done this role before, so if he's open to it, I'd hope that he'd serve again.
I would like to thank, to second that, this is Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman.
Very nice. So the motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Suarez to nominate Councilmember Pat Kearney to serve as Mayor Pro Tem. And it was seconded by Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the, the council to vote. Yes, let's, yeah, let's have a vote. Let's have the Assistant City Clerk conduct the vote on that.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, for item twelve, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
I'm gonna stay because I don't vote for myself.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with one abstention.
Okay. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. Kearney?
Thank you.
Okay, very, very nice. Okay, item number thirteen is the city representation to intergovernmental agencies and board. Um, this is the item where the mayor appoints members of the city council to serve on various committees and boards that represent the city on outside agency. If you look on, um, agenda tab thirteen, you see the, um, the resolution that will, that we would kind of govern ourselves under to fill in the names of the board members, I should say, uh, council members that will serve on these various boards. I'm going to ask the council to, if they haven't already, to take a look at the, um, the, actually, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, six, um, six agencies. And if there's any that they strike their fancy, um, if they haven't discussed it with me already that they would like to, um, serve on, we'll take up that item at this time. We'll take them one at a time. Um, the first one is the California Contract Cities Association, um, Board of Directors. Um, just a point of clarification, I did clarify with the, um, members of the executive board that you are allowed to appoint more than one alternate, um, to that, um, position, one delegate, and you can have as many alternates you feel, feel the need to. So at this point, I would recommend, I'm gonna, um, appointing as a delegate, um, Pat Kearney as a delegate. And if Rhonda is interested, I would like to, um, Councilwoman, um, Hoffman-Gorman, Robert Pullen Miles and, um, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman. Rhonda, are you interested in, um?
Yes, I am.
In the office? Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure I won't sign you up for something you were not interested in. Okay, great. So, so why don't we just write that in, um, um, Matthews, and then we'll take a motion for all of them, to confirm all of them at one time.
Sounds good.
Okay. The next item is the California Joint Powers, um, Insurance Authority. Um, I would like to remain the delegate for that. They meet only once a year, pretty much, sometimes twice a year, um. They don't take, um, alternate. So we won't be naming an alternate for, for that particular position. Okay, the Sentinel Youth Services Board, Bernadette, you want to continue?
Yes, I would like to continue to serve in that capacity.
Okay, I will appoint Bernadette to the, as a delegate, um, well, board member. And they changed their bylaws and they do not allow for alternate. So she would be the only representative, so there's no alternate. The Sentinel, the Bernadette. And the County Sanitation, um, District? And the County Sanitation District, number five, calls for the providing, the presiding officer of the council to be the, the member. And so I'll continue serving as a delegate for the County Sanitation District. And it does allow for an alternate.
Uh, Robert.
Who's interested? You interested in it?
Yeah, I'm still interested in being alternate.
Okay, so Pat would serve as the alternate. Okay, we've got two more to go, so you guys feel free to jump in. You've got the League of California Cities. Now, I'm the delegate and then we have an alternate. I don't have to be the delegate.
And the same, I don't mind, the same, I don't mind not being the alternate, just to give uh, one of the new council members a chance to sit on there.
Mayor, uh, Shirley Cuevas, I, I would like to be a delegate.
Okay, so let's put Shirley Cuevas. You, would you like to be the uh, delegate or the alternate delegate?
I could be the delegate.
Okay, so we'll take Pullen Miles off, we put Cuevas as the, as a delegate. And I can serve as an alternate or do you want to serve as an alternate, uh, Bernadette?
Uh, you can serve. Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so I'll serve as the alternate, okay. So we have Cuevas as the delegate for the California League of Cities and Pullen Miles as the alternate. Now we have the, um, the South Bay Council Government. Currently Bernadette is our delegate and Pullen Miles and Osborne are delegates. You can have more than one delegate here. Um, I would like to stay an alternate delegate.
And I would like to continue to serve as the delegate.
You're doing a great job, Bernadette.
Great job, Bernadette. Is, let me ask, is, is there any, is there anyone else interested in being a, um, an alternate? Because you can have more than one. Generally you have one, but you can have more than one.
Shirley Cuevas to be an alternate.
Okay, let's push Shirley Cuevas. Okay, Shirley Cuevas as an alternate.
And I'd also like to add, I'd like to add for that board, there's also um, another meeting that happens during the day that sometimes I'm not always able to make, so I can coordinate with the either of you two on those. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, so we have Bernadette as the um, delegate and Shirley and Robert as the um, alternate. Very good. Okay, if you'd like to summarize that, uh, make sure we have a correct um, Assistant City Clerk, Matt, before I make the, the appointment.
Sure. For the uh, California Contract Cities Association, I have um, uh, Councilmember Pat Kearney as the delegate and the alternates being Mayor Robert Pullen Miles and Councilmember Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman. For the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Board, uh, Board of Directors, I only have the delegate being Robert Pullen Miles. Um, I know they allow for an alternate and a staff alternate. That's what I have.
Okay. They, okay, they, they allow for an alternate?
I, I, I have that listed as the previous appointment. That Councilmember Kearney was the alternate and the staff alternate was city manager.
Okay.
Kevin Chung.
So who wants to serve as the alternate?
I'll still serve as your alternate. Rhonda wants to go or somebody else?
I would be more than happy. This is Rhonda Hoffman. I'd be more than happy at, e- either way.
Okay, let's put, let's put um, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman.
Okay, and I'll keep uh, staff alternate on there.
Yes.
And then the Sentinel Youth Service, I have um, delegate being uh, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez.
Okay.
The Sanitation District, number five, uh, delegate being Mayor Pullen Miles and the alternate being uh, Councilmember Pat Kearney. The League of California Cities, um, LA County Division, I have the delegate being Shirley Cuevas and the alternate being uh, Mayor Robert Pullen Miles. And then for the South Bay Cog Board of Directors, I have the delegate as um, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez and a Councilmember Cuevas and Robert Pullen Miles as the alternates.
Okay, thank you. That, so that would be the order. I'm gonna need someone to um, so these would be my, my nominees for the um, for the um, board uh, positions, delegate and alternate. Um, I need someone to.
I'll make a motion to accept the changes.
And go forward. To ratify.
And I'll second it.
Been made and sort of motion to, to ratify and second to ratify. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna ask the Assistant City Clerk to give the roll on the notification of the mayor's appointment to the outside um, agency.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, for item thirteen, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez.
Yes, but do we, do we change the rotation for the voting yet?
No.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Pat takes the next meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, sorry, yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Okay, item fourteen, discussion regarding the vacancy in the office of the city clerk. Uh, with the various options, let's have a staff report from the Assistant City Clerk.
All right, last time you guys have to hear from me, I promise. Uh, Honorable Mayor and City Council, the item before you is to direct staff in selecting a process to fill the vacancy of the city clerk. Due to the election of Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman to City Council, it leaves a vacancy in the position of city clerk for an unexpired term of two years. The three options to fill the vacancy would be A, appoint someone to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term. B, leave the office vacant and call a special election to elect a city clerk. Or C, a hybrid of the two, appoint someone to fill the vacancy and call a special election. Staff is recommending option A, appoint someone to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term. As this was done in the past and is the most cost, uh, cost-effective way to fill the vacancy. Uh, if approved, staff will begin to circulate the application for the appointment of city clerk. The suggested deadline would be six PM on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, to be considered for appointment at the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting. Uh, at this meeting, an informal interview of the applicants could take place, followed by the nomination and the appointment of an individual. Uh, the draft application and interview questions are included in the staff report. This concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for the staff report. Yeah, so this was pretty cut and dry. Those are the options we have um, to fill the, the vacancy. Um, uh, let's have some discussions of any, well, let's have a discussion on this item. And who would like to discuss this item? Okay, well, I'll do something there. I would suggest um, the, that we go with the uh, the um, staff's recommendation is to appoint someone to the um, city clerk for the duration of the, the, of, of the term, which is approximately two years.
Yeah, but it's Councilmember Kearney. I will second your uh, recommendation.
Okay, of course that goes also with um, with an application and the interview process as outlined by the Assistant City Clerk. Is there any discussion on that? Any more discussion? Okay, um, can I adopt this by now? Because then you want to, uh, official vote on this, uh, City Clerk.
Uh, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Probably a vote, yeah. Okay.
The vote and, and Mayor, if I could interrupt for a second, this is Tiffany Israel. Matt, did we need any direction about the timeline for things?
No, I, I have everything kind of listed out there. It would be at the uh, first meeting in um, January.
Okay, Mayor, so your motion is on track with that? That, that works for the council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. So that would be my recommendation, uh, my motion that we uh, follow the staff recommendation of filling the, the vacancy. And so motion will be made by Mayor Pullen Miles and seconded by Councilmember, uh, Pat Kearney. So any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask the City Clerk to give the roll call. Assistant City Clerk, the vote's me.
Thank you for item fourteen, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, now we have item I, city manager's report. Let's hear from the city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Um, first, uh, just a couple uh, reminders for you and also for the community. Um, just a reminder that um, um, the city council will be dark for the next two city council meetings. Um, scheduled for December twenty-first and also for January four, uh, fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Um, and that the next meeting of the city council will be conducted on Tuesday, January nineteenth. And again, that'll be Tuesday as a result of the um, Martin Luther King Junior holiday, which will be um, on Monday before. And then also, I wanted to remind um, you and the community regarding the uh, Angel Tree lighting event. While the um, um, community event that we normally put on for this event, it can't happen this year due to the pandemic. Uh, we will be able to continue with the tradition of the Angel Tree lighting um, through live streaming. So um, we will have a live streaming of the event for the lighting of the tree and that is scheduled for um, six PM tomorrow. And I'd just like to encourage the community to um, watch the event. It will be available for viewing um, on the city's cable channel as well as um, on YouTube, which can be accessed through the city's website. And then finally, um, on behalf of our city staff, I wanted to thank both city council members, Jim Osborne and Dan Reed, for their service and leadership to the community. It was indeed a pleasure for all of us to work with both Jim and Dan. We'll miss their perspective and wisdom on issues and we'll miss seeing them around City Hall. But we know they're still here in town and we hope they'll drop in to see us from time to time. Also, on behalf of the staff, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Pullen Miles for your reelection. We look forward to continuing to work with you to help move Longdale forward to even greater heights. And also, I'd like to congratulate and welcome our new city council members, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman and Shirley Cuevas. We know that you'll both represent the city very well and we look forward to getting to know you better and to working with you over the years to come. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. City manager. Okay, next item on our agenda is items from the council members. This is where the um, each council member have opportunity to speak about um, anything that they would like to issue, or whatever they would like to bring up. As well as um, any events that they want to report, they may have taken, any meals that they may have consumed on the city's um, um, dining, that's part of the requirement. Other than that, it's pretty much, well, I'm, I'm open. So let's start with uh, let's see, I'm trying to visualize. It may not be in perfect order. We have it in perfect order next, next meeting. Let's start with um, with Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
Thank you, Robert.
Can't visualize the diocese. Go, go ahead.
I would just like to encourage Longdale residents as the outgoing city clerk. It's an amazing position. You learn an awful lot about government. And if you ever thought about getting your feet wet in representation, this is the perfect opportunity. So as the outgoing um, city clerk, and I have said this to Matthew many times, I have absolutely truly enjoyed representing the residents as their city clerk. And I would just encourage anybody, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Matthew will be more than happy to answer them, but please, if you're interested, apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Shirley Cuevas.
Uh, I would like once again to thank everybody um, for helping me on this campaign. Looking forward to working with everybody, staff, the council members and listening to the citizens' concerns and thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pat Kearney?
I attended one meeting. That was a Lobby Trusted Oversight Committee meeting with uh, city manager Kevin Chung. I attended with you, Robert, and Adam Burke, the turkey and goodies giveaway at Linux Academy. Also, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I want to salute Dan Reed because remember the date, what today is, December seventh. I salute the Navy. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
I attended an emergency board of directors meeting last week for the South Bay City Council of Government. We discussed the um, the, the new restrictions banning outdoor dining. We collectively agreed to send a letter to the county asking them to reevaluate that decision. Um, and us as a council also sent a letter um, with the same sentiment. So I'm glad that all of the cities um, collectively decided unanimously that um, that they wanted to continue to allow businesses, uh, you know, with uh, protocols in place um, to con- to continue to allow people to eat outside, at the very least. Um, and then I also wanted to just say welcome to our two new councilwomen. Um, I knew that when I had heard the results that both of you were elected, I, I was pretty excited to work with both of you. I know that both of you, the intent is all about um, helping out our city and I know both of you have a real heart for that. And so, you know, I'm excited to work with you and, and we'll, we'll keep continuing to try and push forward through these tough times and um, you know, uh, so welcome to talk to me as long as you haven't talked to anyone else with the Brown Eyed Girls and uh, thank you.
Thank you. And I too, once again, want to uh, congratulate our new council members, um, Hoffman-Gorman and Cuevas. We look forward to your service on the city council and it's gonna be a, a fun ride. It's gonna be interesting the next um, couple of, couple of years, a lot of great projects um, coming up. And um, we'll get you guys up to speed on those projects um, as, as soon as possible, so we can get your valuable input. But congratulations um, to both you ladies, um, in your new capacity. Uh, one coming from uh, the city clerk's um, office and one planning commissioner. So that's great. Both of you guys have experience here in, in the city of Longdale. We appreciate you joining um, the, the council and welcome. With that, I want to say also that I attended the regular meeting of the sanitation um, district, uh, district number five. And although I was on the clock, kind of, I was supposed to be working, I, I did participate also in the turkey giveaway. There was a couple of Longdale folks there a- as well. Uh, I want to thank um, Councilmember Pat Kearney um, and his granddaughter for coming out and volunteering for the, the turkey giveaway. Uh, which benefited the, the whole community, including the city of Longdale. And with that, I do look forward to um, everyone having a safe holiday season. I just want to remind everyone about the um, you know, the pandemic, that the um, the pandemic is real. The numbers are real and we should govern ourselves accordingly to stay safe so that we as a community um, can stay safe. And I know we have an issue with the, with the county and how they came about their, their determinations of closing um, some of the establishments um, down, particularly the, you know, the restaurants. And my biggest question that I would have for the county is for them to show us the data. I mean, I do know um, that the numbers have increased drastically, but what about those numbers that contribute to outdoor dining? It's yet to be seen. And that's what we're asking the county basically to make, you know, not just sweeping decisions to close down businesses that's gonna affect our community um, adversely, but instead to make um, make decisions that's, that's based on some type. But instead to make, um, make decisions that's, that's based on some type of science, some type of evidence and not just because it seems like we have to do something. It seems like a good, feel-good thing to do. I want to know exactly how they come up with the determination that, um, outdoor dining is the, the cause of the increase of the, um, the spread of the coronavirus. Now, if that's the case, then that is the case, but we, at least to my knowledge, that answer has not, that question has not been answered. So I don't want to adversely, adversely affect our community and our business owners who are struggling every day to, to survive, um, just because someone's had made determination without the, the data to, to, to back it up. So that's one of the things that we're gonna be really, you know, um, concerned about. Um, especially moving into the holiday season, I want to make sure that everyone is constantly aware, um, about the traveling restrictions, um, and to govern themselves accordingly. You know what's best for you and your family, but at the same time, keep the community, um, in mind because what affects you may not just affect you, but it may also affect the community as we go into this holiday season. With that, I want to, uh, wish everyone a wonderful holiday season.
Uh, Robert, this, Councilman Kearney, one more thing I forgot to mention. Is it okay?
Yeah.
This is to Jim and Bernadette. The pendulum swings other way now. There's more Cardinals than Olympians on the council. Thank you.
You're right.
Yeah.
Can we go?
Yeah, card up. All right, good night, everyone.
Oh, okay. We'll take that. Okay.
We still have the point of city clerk.
With that, until, until this, this need to take a turn, we're, we're gonna adjourn to the regular scheduled meeting, which will be held on Dec- no? No, the regular scheduled meeting is scheduled to be held on December twenty-first, twenty twenty and January the first, twenty twenty-one, were counseled by order of the city council on October the twelfth. I'm supposed to read all that? Okay. City hall will be closed for the Martin Luther King Junior holiday on the next regular meeting date. Therefore, the next meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty P M. On Tuesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. With that, we are adjourned. Hi, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.